Well, good evening. We'd like to welcome you out to our City Council political forum this evening. We appreciate you joining us. As we mentioned earlier, if you have a question that you'd like asked tonight of the candidates, there are blue cards on the back table there that you can fill out and bring up to us. And we'll do our best to get those incorporated into the meeting tonight. If you do have specific questions for an individual candidate, we'd encourage you to ask those questions of them individually afterwards, just because we want to make sure we have a topic in our questions that everybody can answer. So, we'd like to just let you know, we have three council seats that are up for election this year. So, going from our left to right, running for council seat number one, we have Leon Mills, Suzanne Hawkins, Eric Smallwood, and Lea Babion. And in Twin Falls City Council Seat Number Five is Greg Lanting and Tim Allen. Larry Hauser is also on the ballot and was invited to that. We did confirm he was going to be here, but we don't see him here yet tonight. And then in Twin Falls City Council Seat Number Six is Christopher Reed and Brian Bell. So, just a couple of housekeeping rules tonight. Since there are eight of you up there, we are going to limit you to two minutes to your answers, so we can get through as many questions as we can. So, we have a 15-second warning card, and then when you get the yellow card, we need you to wrap it up, so we can move on to additional questions. Tonight, this forum is being broadcast live-streamed on the city website and will be archived there, so as you respond, we just ask you to make sure you talk directly via microphone, so we can make sure everybody here in the audience tonight can hear you as well as it can be recorded. So, again, we welcome you being here. We're going to just start tonight, and Mr. Mills will start with you, and just go across the rostrum. We're going to give you two minutes to introduce yourself individually, and then to tell the audience why you're running for City Council.
My name is Leon Mills, and I was born here in Twin Falls. I worked in management at Humber Yard for about nine years, and after that, I went to work for Conagra Foods for 21 years, and then I was the Twin Falls County Commissioner for the last six years. And then, I'm married to my wife Sherri for 37 years, have three children, three daughters, and as, I think, as a Commissioner, I have a lot of experience with the government and understand how it works, and I'm just making myself available to help our city as we move forward and grow through all of its life.
My name is Suzanne Hawkins, and I'm currently serving as Twin Falls' Vice Mayor. It's a position I've held for the last four years, and the year before that, I was a City Councilperson. I've enjoyed very much my time working with the city and for the citizens, and I feel like I have a very strong track record to run on. First of all, my husband Dave and I have a small business on Blue Lakes Hair and Town. We've ran a computer store that just started. It's 24th year this October, so we have been very successful in our personal life as well. We have six married children, we have 18 grandchildren, and when I first decided to get involved in local government, my husband teased me that it was my midlife crisis. So, our kids grew up and left home, and I wanted a way to get back to our community and keep Twin Falls a family-friendly place where my kids would want to live and raise my grandchildren. And that was my heart's desire, to see Twin Falls stay a place where everyone had a place to fit in and an itch. Over the past five years, I've been elected to the Association of Idaho Cities Executive Board. I serve as the second Vice President, and with that, I've had a chance to work with our state leaders and keep a voice for Twin Falls at the state level, reminding them not to do harm to cities. It's a big job, and it takes some time, but it's well worth all of the energy. I also work with our city's youth council. I'm the advisor with our youth, and spend hours every week with youth in the schools and around the community, mentoring and leading them in local government and city issues. I've also worked with our Planning and Zoning Commission. Right now, I'm the liaison to our public library, and if you haven't been to our library in the last little while, it's really a gem you should check out again. We have lots and lots of great things happening there. Again, my name is Suzanne, and it's been my honor to serve you for the last five years, and tonight I am asking for your vote to continue in this position.
Thank you, Mr. Smallwood.
Hi, my name is Eric Smallwood. I'm a resident of Twin Falls for the last year now. I recently moved back here after spending a decade gone from southern Idaho. I spent a decade in North Dakota. I was there for the whole boom and bust of that debacle out there, and I wanted to come back to southern Idaho, and I liked how Twin Falls is growing. And I thought, you know, I'd like to come and be a part of this community and put my time and talents to making it a better place. Design of cities is my passion. It's something I got into when I lived back there, and I would like to focus on making Twin Falls not only a more pedestrian and bike-friendly city, but I'd also like to work on improving the traffic corridors. I'd like to work on the second avenues. I think that they're, in their current configuration, are detrimental to the downtown revitalization. I'm all for downtown revitalization, but I think downtown is more than just five blocks. It's a whole encompassing area. I'd also like to focus on design of our neighborhoods and focus on infilling this city rather than sprawling it any further. And I feel, I've been there in a town where you have a low unemployment rate and you have growth, and I've seen growth get out of control, and at a 3% unemployment rate, we're going to grow in Twin Falls. That's just inevitable. And so, I would like to be on the City Council to use my time and talents to ensure that we grow smart and not just hodgepodge and not just accept any growth as good growth. And I'd like to ask you for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babiyan.
Thank you. Thanks for pronouncing my last name right. I appreciate that.
All right. I even practiced before, and then I messed it up.
I know, everybody does. My name is Lea Babion, and today, actually this last month, my family celebrated 25 years here in the United States. My parents are in the audience here, and I wanted to acknowledge them, because without them making the brave choice that they did, we wouldn't even be alive, and without the Refugee CSI Center, I wouldn't even be here. So, coming here to Twin Falls 25 years ago as a refugee to a community like Twin Falls, where there was absolutely no diversity, I can tell you that we absolutely started at the very bottom, and now I'm here. So, we did something right. We learned, we integrated, and I have had the opportunity to learn this community from every angle possible, including those angles that most of our representatives aren't even aware of. So, why am I running for City Council? I love this community. I have grown in this community. My second birthday begins in this community. My American experience and my family's American experience begins in this community, and there is a sense of duty to repay that debt, that duty to give back to the community that adopted us. And more of a reason why I'd like to represent this community in City Council is that we have and we have had a stagnation in our representation. Very few people vote, and the people that do vote, they don't represent the whole community. And so, we do have stagnation in representation, not just on a national level, but especially locally. So, I'd like to add diversity to the council and bring the experience I've had to the council, and please vote.
Thank you, Mr. Lanting.
Hi, my name's Greg Lanting. Currently, the incumbent in Seat Number Five. I've been City Council for 12 years. Before that, I was on the Twin Falls Planning and Zoning for eight years, paying my dues. I grew up in the Hollister area, which is out towards, if you're headed towards jackpot. Actually, my grandfather was a pioneer out there, coming to this area in the early 1900s, and settling in a little Dutch community there. He was Dutch, didn't speak very much English, and even into my high school years, his English was limited. And grew up out there on the farm, learning those sort of values. I think those are important as a person moves forward. I'm a retired middle school principal. I was also a teacher for 16 years and a principal for 17 years. I moved to Twin Falls after college and after my military training, and I've been a resident of Twin Falls ever since then, a resident of Twin Falls County for my entire life. Like Suzanne, I am also on the AIC Executive Board. I was the President of the Association of Idaho Cities two years ago. The Association of Idaho Cities is our education, our technical, and our lobbying group, the kind of umbrella over cities to help us to get things done as we need to and give us that professional expertise as we need it. Why I'm running, I love Twin Falls. I unambaciously say that. I say that at every one of these meetings, and if you love a place, why wouldn't you want to be on the council so that you can position Twin Falls for the future, because that's what we've been trying to do. And so, again, I would ask for your vote, because I'd like to spend four more years on council. Thank you.
And Mr. Jarrow.
Yeah, my name is Tim Allen. I am a lifelong resident of Twin Falls. I grew up just outside town, just out by the old county, or the old hospital, the county building now. I'm currently a helicopter pilot. I work for Air St. Luke's. I'm definitely a newcomer to the public arena and this sort of stuff, but I, you know, I'm doing this because I really do have the desire to make our town a better place, to raise my, I chose to raise my family here. My wife and I are both from here. We have three beautiful little girls, and, you know, I look forward to the future. We're having a really exciting time here in Twin Falls, a lot of things happening here. And so, how we manage that growth and how all these things that are coming our way is, you know, it's kind of weighs on my mind, and I think everybody should be involved in this. So, this is my way to try to get more involved and to see what I can do if I can make a difference for our city. So, I'm also here to ask for your vote as well and earn your confidence, so thank you.
Mr. Reed.
First, I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. I'm sure you had a lot of other things to do tonight, but thank you for being here and being a part of the political process. My name is Chris Reed. I have lived in Twin Falls now for six, six and a half years. I married my sweetheart 15 years ago, and we have seven children, two of which were born here in Twin Falls. I currently work for Zion's Bank in the Business Payments and Technology Division for Zion's Bank. During the six and a half years in Twin Falls, I've had quite a bit of an opportunity to serve. Six years ago, I ran for City Council, did not make the cut, which was a very good learning opportunity for me. After that, I was the co-chair for the Citizens Committee for Wastewater Infrastructure. I was a committee member for the new city hall and public safety complex. I then served on planning and zoning, learned a ton. It is a great opportunity to serve if you have an opportunity on planning and zoning, and for the last 10 months, I've served as a City Council member. The reason that I want your vote for City Council is I love this community. It's been stated by most up here. It is a great community, the community that I was raised in. Unfortunately, I wouldn't have an opportunity to go back to, because the decisions that were made by the city and by the state aren't allowing growth, and Twin Falls is allowing growth. And I want to be a part of it, so that my children ultimately could live here. So, I'm asking for your vote also on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Bell, and I'm running for Seat Six in the city of Twin Falls. I am a lifelong member of the Magic Valley. I was born here, I was raised here, I've lived my whole life here. So, I definitely feel like I have an opportunity and an obligation to return that very rewarding experience to the people that I interact with daily and to the community at large. I am unambaciously a geek. My background is in science and technology, but I also have a passion for political process. I've gone to school twice for that very reason, beyond the technical and into the interpersonal and political arena. This is my first foray into the political arena, and I'm very excited about the opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that, and we didn't have to yellow-card any one of you on that. It was already marked, so that was great. So, as we go through the questioning, and we'll stay with our time limit of two minutes, we are going to do a random order, where we start with those questions, and Matt Christiansen, our editor, is up here with me, and him and I will rotate between questions.
Yeah, so, Mr. Allen, I'll start with you. I think almost everybody on the panel used the word "growth" at least once in their opening statement, and I'm hoping to dig a little deeper into that topic here with this question. Can you talk to me a little bit about what your growth philosophy is for the city? Is Twin Falls in a position where it should be pursuing more big businesses like Cliffbar and Giovanni? Talk about the rate of that growth, and then maybe a little bit about what you see as the City Council's role specifically in shaping how that growth would work.
All right. Sorry, I wrote some of that down. That was a big question. So, when you look at Twin Falls and how it is growing, it's been, it's been amazing the last, you know, we can go back 10, 15 years, when it really started. It's kind of like the secret got out, you know, that Twin Falls is such an amazing place, and now everyone's coming here. And the reason they come here and they stay is because of the people, right? The people, we are the greatest asset of the city. We're going to drive this growth, and we're going to make, we're going to want these decisions to be made to make it a better place to live. So, I think part of the question as well, you said, big business, and, you know, we should, I think we should always, you know, economic growth is always going to be a part of this, and if we add more of these big businesses, you know, that's going to add more workers and keep things growing. But when we think about like our downtown and the different development going on down there, it's a lot better to have more smaller-type businesses and then, other than the big, huge, that bring in a lot of jobs, but we have more diversity that way when we have a downtown that grows in that manner. So, I think it is, it's important to have those businesses, and we've seen them come, and I think they're just still going to come, but if we can focus more on getting that growth in the smaller markets, I think it will help. And then, the City Council, we have, or they have, excuse me, I said "we," but as a citizen, we should have the opportunity to come and visit with these guys and women to talk about, you know, this growth and how we can manage it better. And so, that's why involvement in the community is very, very important. I feel like I haven't done that enough in my life, and so I want to do more, win or lose with this. I hope to plan to do more with that and to maybe join some of these committees to make sure that we can succeed and make this place, this city, a better place and manage this growth, so it doesn't get out of control. Thank you.
Mr. Lanting.
Yes, we've certainly experienced growth. I've certainly been, feel responsible for some of that growth. I was on council in the middle of the recession, and when we attracted Giovanni here, and, I mean, let's be honest, it was the middle of the recession. We had 9% unemployment, and Giovanni was promising at that point only 350 jobs. They ended up bringing quite a few more jobs, and we had good pay with benefits, and yes, we went hard to attract them, and we were able to attract them to the Magic Valley, actually, Twin Falls. I think if we hadn't ever entered the fray, they probably would have been, it would have ended up a bit burly. That's my feeling anyway. Then we were able to attract Cliffbar. I was the mayor when we attracted Cliffbar. I remember distinctly standing in a field out there where they ended up building, talking to the founder and owner of Cliffbar and thinking, what is a farm boy from Hollister doing talking to the president and owner of probably the coolest company in America, because they really do have a lot of attractive things for their employees? And so, we were able to attract them, and then others. But now, I think we have actually been making a little bit of a concentrated effort to work with our current industries and our current businesses to help them to expand. And one of the reasons that I've always been wanting to do this with the job growth is, I think it's important that if our children and our grandchildren, and maybe even a great number of grandchildren for some of the people in the audience, want to stay in Twin Falls, they can choose to stay. Without jobs, without some certain amount of growth, they may choose to go elsewhere because they just don't have the choice to be here. So, wrapping it up, what Tim said, he talked about the people. We sell that to every employer that wants to come to Twin Falls, the work ethic and the people of Twin Falls.
Mr. Babiyan.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, Twin Falls really is a low wage, low skill, low education trap. It really, what it does is for anyone that wants to have any kind of future, my generation included, and anyone graduating really, they hurry and get out of here. That's why we have a brain drain, not just in Twin Falls, but this is a trend throughout Idaho. We have a skill gap. We are attracting, yes, factory work, and we become like a factory-dependent community. If these factories start replacing their machinery, which they already are, with robotics, what's that going to do to our workforce? It's low-skill, and it's dependent on factory work. So, we are very short-term thinking. Future-proof thinking is getting into the white corporate, white-collar corporate type of employment, where the skill and the talent can be retained. That way, our young people, when they're graduating, they're not relocating. Very few people come back. There is a migration for, to come back to rural communities, but they're choosing other rural communities because of the pay and what's available for jobs. There's an impact with all the growth that's occurred in our community, not just impact to our environment and to our property tax, but there's really an impact on our community health. With the kind of work that we have and the type of wages that there are, we're still, people are still trapped in a cycle of poverty. They're raising their families paycheck to paycheck, and I think it's important that when we make decisions in government, that we're calculating the average family and not just voters and not just property taxpayers and not just developers and factory owners, that we're actually representing the people first. That's my slogan, and that's what I'm bringing to the table, is representation for the average family and the people first.
Mr. Smallwood. You know, in today's world, it's a knowledge-based economy, and what that means is that companies can pretty much, for a lot of the work out there, locate anywhere, especially tech companies. And so, I think we need to cater to millennials. Millennials are the growing factor of economic growth in America. The studies all show that. So, what do millennials want? They want to live in more of an urban environment. So, I think we need to focus on urban growth, not suburban growth. I would like to see the downtown keep going, and I mentioned this in my opening statements. I'm opposed to sprawling our city much further. You know, when housing gets short like it is, all of a sudden, you get a developer that comes in and says, oh, hey, I've got this piece of land that's another mile past the city, but it can't get any land closer. And so, all of a sudden, we say, oh, we need housing, let's go build that development there, and then it gets annexed into the city, and then there, then you've got a whole other part of your town that's another mile out, and then all of a sudden, you need another fire station out there to have a five-minute response time, and all of a sudden, you've got all this extra infrastructure that's not sustainable out there. The property taxes never support, and that's the pattern of growth you see across America. And I don't think that we can, that's a sustainable trend. And so, I think that we need to attract, build a city where the, that we're attracting, you know, young talent that wants to come here and live here, and we're attracting companies that want to come here because they know that they'll be able to attract talent to come here. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you for the question, and I'm going to start at the end and come back the other way. The end of your question is, what is the role of the City Council in growth? And so, I think it's important to remember that in Twin Falls, in our form of government, the City Council is more of a board of directors. We hire a city manager who runs our city's day-to-day business with a full team of economic development specialists, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as a whole Planning and Zoning section in the city of employees, and those are people who are knowledgeable and skilled and educated in making decisions on planning and leading. It's our job to oversee the decisions that are being made and to help guide and give input where it's asked, but we are really more of an advisor and not the day-to-day workman planning. We also need to remember, as jobs, developments are coming to our community, that all of that land is owned by private property owners, and people who own property have the right to develop their property as they see fit, as long as it fits within the city's codes and ordinances for development. We don't leapfrog, we don't hopscotch around, but if there's someone who has property that they feel like they can develop and make a living on, they do have that right in America, and as a council, we need to respect that as we're looking at some of the plans. We've been very careful in Twin Falls in the last two years. After we received Giovanni and then were able to get Cliffbar, we have brought in good-paying jobs, living wages, not paycheck-to-paycheck jobs, with great benefits and a lot of added-on benefits for our community with better wastewater lines and better water facilities. However, now we're in a place where we can lead. We don't have to take what comes. So, the first question we ask of people coming to our community is, how much water are you going to take, and how much wastewater are you going to produce? And we work very hard to make sure that people that are coming to Twin Falls today fit our community, and it's by our choice, not theirs. Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I think that we definitely need job education. As we go forward, I worked for Conagra for 21 years, and when Giovanni came and Cliffbar, a lot of people migrated to that because they paid really well. And so, there was kind of just a shift in the job industry, and people were saying to me, hey, how do we fix that? And I said, well, you pay more money to begin with, but that's what we need. We need to educate people to fit into those jobs, and then we need to make sure that our roads and our infrastructure in this city can accommodate the things that we bring here, and that our light system, like I live on the Jefferson Street, and there's a light, and then there's Washington Street, and forever, you can't get through there. It's just gridlocked and backed up, and we just need to make sure that, as a city and a City Council, that our systems work well to be able to get traffic through there. And the water, you know, the quality of the services that we have, such as out towards the airport by the water tower, that subdivision was not able to be developed because they didn't have the water and the infrastructure in it. And then, when they were able to, then it became a part of a good place to live. And so, I think that as a City Council role, that we are to make the smart-sense decisions to move our city forward into the future. You know, when I was a Commissioner, we had an opportunity to move into the County West Building, and I looked at that as if, once we remodeled it and made it what it is, it's good for 50 to 100 years, and that's the way I think. I'm not just thinking about today's role, I'm thinking where we're going to be in the future, and I feel that I can add to that by being a City Council member.
Mr. Reed, please.
So, to answer the first question, should we go after new business, big business, whatever it is? I'm in favor of businesses. I feel that it really helps out the community. We've talked a little bit about wages. Competition is the best thing for wages. As we have seen low unemployment, we've seen wages go up. We've seen businesses compete for employees. We've seen them move from one employer to another employer, and then again, back to the other or to another one because of the benefits and what they're able to receive. So, I'm in favor of it. I think the other important question is, what is the role of the city in economic development? And the role is to create an environment for success, whether it is the individual buying a home, building a home, living in an apartment, building condos, whatever it is, to plan that out, make sure that there's a natural flow, but also for businesses, making sure that there's an infrastructure in place, so when they move in, they can be successful. They're not having to wait on us. So, that's the role of the city in economic development, is creating an environment for success. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, please.
The city is a living organism, and it's an organism that does not maintain itself at times. It's absolutely essential that businesses, both large and small, are embraced, accepted, and endorsed for the community to thrive. There's no way around that. Twin Falls, throughout its entire history, is a support structure for the greater agricultural community, and the businesses here in Twin Falls represent that, very demographic. Those farmers, those communities, they do not live in Twin Falls. They live in the outlying areas. Twin Falls is in a unique position as a city to be a hub of a very, very large and diverse community. You draw a circle 50 miles around Twin Falls, this is where they come for everything. All of their major decisions are made with this community in mind. And that growth and that embracement of the businesses that support those farmers, Giovanni is dairy, Cliffbar are the grains, Conagra, potatoes and meats, falls bread, same thing. I worked for Armored Made Sugar. We are entirely agriculturally based. To not recognize the agricultural part of this community is really, really misunderstanding the core and the history of what this community is about, and the City Council is a significant part of making sure that not just Twin Falls, but the outlying areas are recognized as well.
I'd like to thank Mr. Larry Hauser for joining us. Mr. Hauser, the question before the panel now has to do with growth. Could you talk to us about what your growth philosophy is?
Could you talk to us about what your growth philosophy is, specifically your opinion on whether Twin Falls is ready to attract more large businesses on the scale of Chobani and Clip Bar, and what you believe the council's role is in shaping economic growth?
Again, I apologize for being late. Had to pick up my sister from work, and I thought the meeting was at 6:30 instead of 6:00, so... But as far as growth for the community, I think I heard Leon mention the water. Water is one of our most valuable resources, and I think that we can tap in for cleaner water using technologies that were developed in the past through solar panels to clean the water. And as far as the growth is concerned, we are developing our infrastructure, our existing infrastructure, and preparing for more people. Agriculture is a big thing, and I know that Haber, I think it is, is working on a wheatgrass plastics plant. I think that if this country would embrace the hemp industry and the cannabis industry, that our farmers would also have an alternative crop, and we could focus on hemp plastics, hempcrete, and maybe expand on our city's income by doing what Colorado has done with the taxes that it would bring. And then, we could offer our children more industry potential, like hemp plastic car plants, hemp oil fuel plants, just things like that.
Great, thank you. We'd like to remind those in the audience, if you have questions, please fill them out on the blue card and bring them up to us. We'd like to get those worked into our conversation tonight. So, I'm kind of staying on this growth theme, but follow-up question, and Mr. Smallwood, we're going to start with you. So, with all of this growth, we're seeing an unprecedented unemployment rate of under 3% in the city of Twin Falls. And so, you hear a lot of businesses talking about talent attraction, attracting people to come to Twin Falls. And so, a two-part question here. The city is exploring a recreation center. So, first of all, do you support the city's efforts to develop a recreation center? And second of all, if you were elected, what would be the number one priority you'd have for a community amenity that you would look like to see developed to attract people to the city of Twin Falls?
So, I am all in favor of a rec center. I'm actually on the city's committee to explore bringing us a rec center. It's going to be, it's a, we just formed, we've just had a couple of meetings, and we figure this is going to be a couple-of-year process that ends in probably taking a bond to the voters to be passed. And I see the rec center as a huge talent attractor. I think it's a necessity. I think as people are exploring, you know, their options for where they're going to go to work, and they come to Twin, and we don't have a rec center, I think it's a huge, huge detraction for them. So, I'm all for a rec center. I think we can't afford not to have one, not only, not only for talent attraction, but just to create a healthy community. You know, we live in a, in a time of childhood obesity growing at an alarming rates, diabetes rates off the charts. So, if we can get our community just, even a small fraction of a percentage healthier, it's going to save us in the long run on hospital costs and care of people that aren't taking care of themselves. So, therefore, your second part of your question, I see the rec center as probably the largest thing, the biggest thing that the city can do to attract, attract talent. Beyond that, I would say connecting, you know, our trail systems are great. It would be nice to see the Rock Creek Trail connect all the way to the Canyon Rim Trail, and eventually it'd be nice to see a tunnel go under Addison over there by the old hospital. But yeah, the rec center is the, I'm all for it, and I think that would be the number one community amenity that the city council could encourage. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question because you had the second part to it?
Yeah, so, do you support the rec center? And then what amenity do you think that you would champion as if you were elected to the city council to be developed in the city of Twin Falls?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So, one of my platforms, if you go to leobabaya.com, one of the platforms you can read about and focus area is healthy community, and that includes the people and the environment. So, seven years ago, actually, I joined my first commission on, with the city council. I've served seven years on Park and Rec. And seven years ago was the first time I heard it echoed that a rec center would, you know, be kind of talked about or considered. So, seven years ago this began, and it was put on a back burner. It was not a priority. I bring that up because that happens often, I think, in local government where those things that affect the people, the immediate community and the people-first in our community get put on the back burner often. Meanwhile, in seven years, we have increasing obesity. One out of three of our children in Idaho, and especially in an area like Twin Falls where we don't have those same features that attract the younger kids. One out of three of our kids is obese, and being on the school board, I also see what that, what that looks like when it affects the household because that lack of healthy habits and lack of healthy lifestyle, it is not made up for in the household. So, the city doesn't back it, the household doesn't back it, in the end, the children do suffer. And so, the second part of your question, I think that a rec center would be a great addition to our community. I think the other thing that we really need to start seriously considering about is a recovery center for all the addiction that we have in our community, and I think that's also part of being a healthy community. We need to prioritize this meth and opiate epidemic that's taking place in our community and not ignore it anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yes, I certainly support the rec center since I was, whoops, sorry, my mic was off. I certainly support the rec center. Our economy and the nation's economy is a whole different spot now, and I think we might be able to have a chance to afford it. If you think about what was going on seven years ago, and the state of their economy and the 9% to 10% unemployment, the only way to get it built is, like Eric talked about, is probably a bond issue, and I'm pretty certain a bond issue would not have raised, would have passed the two-thirds majority threshold seven years ago. And that's the reason it got put on the back burner. There just wasn't the money there to make it happen. As far as things that we can do to help attract people to town, the millennials, like Eric talked about, they talk about a sense of place, and of course, the rec center would be a portion of that. The trails are a portion of that, providing affordable housing is a portion of that. Cultural events and things that CSI provides is now, the orphanage downtown is helping us provide, to give people a reason that they want to, want to live here. Because we keep talking about 3%, but I'm pretty sure when the next number comes out, it's going to be below 2% unemployment in Twin Falls, or at least in the Magic Valley. And so, we're going to have to attract people back here. And as like Mr. Mills talked about in an earlier question, workforce development is definitely something that we're going to have to talk about. The new JCO jobs, the new 350, 60 jobs that JCO just talked about, those people are going to need training. They, they require training for their people to be able to succeed and work, get the jobs they need. So, the, those high-paid jobs. So, yes, I support the rec center, and we need to create a sense of place.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. I definitely also support the rec center. It's, it's definitely a need in our community, but it needs to fit, you know, all the ages of the, of the community. I mean, it really needs to be able to be useful for everybody. So, that's going to be a challenge, I think, in the future as we talk more about the rec center on the city council and the committees. They really need to make sure we do it right, and so that everyone gets involved with that. And, you know, and there's so many benefits with it, get, you know, after-school activities, programs that they could provide. I mean, the list is endless what we could do with it. And so, a lot of the amenities of the city have been talked about. I'm a, I'm a heavy user of the parks a lot. I use turkeys, I climb a lot. You know, my wife and I, we ride bikes with our kids. So, Augur Falls is used heavily by us as well. So, these amenities, I hope to keep growing. We got a lot of great things going, and I hope we can keep that up. It's an important, and we've talked about the trails, you keep expanding the trails, make sure that they leave places. You know, why couldn't a Rock Creek Trail go all the way to Augur Falls? Why can't we connect all these and make one big, huge round circle, you know? Where we, where we can think of. I mean, the possibilities are endless. So, I definitely support all of this, the rec center and, and the parks. And so, like I said, I think we just need to keep the ball rolling, and we have a great place here. Let's keep doing that. So, thank you.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes, when I was a kid back in the 70s, I played down in Rock Creek, and they've developed the trail from gravel trail to like a paved trail, but there's still that odor, sewage odor. I think that we really need to invest in cleaning up the old side of Rock Creek and redeveloping it to the picnic areas that it used to have, the road access, parking down there. There was ruins of old houses that we used to look at down there. And so, I agree with the trail. I wanted to see the Canyon Rim Trail go all the way to Sho Shone Falls, and they've done that since the last time I campaigned. And I would like to see Rock Creek have the trail that possibly would go, maybe a tunnel underneath Addison to the other side, to the RV park and whatnot. But we really need to clean up the odor. That's the thing when we're walking down there, we need to figure out how to get that creek water clean again. And that's where I head back to the technologies of the past and the technologies that we have today, how we can clean up that water and maybe put in greenhouses for purifying water for drinking and growing foods and whatnot. The rec center idea, I think, like I've always said, we need to take care of what we already have. We have the YMCA, we have a bunch of gyms, and honestly, I'd like to see an events center to where we could have concerts and shows and performances so people don't have to drive all the way to Boise or to Salt Lake. So, yeah, maybe combine a rec center with an events center.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
I love the idea of a rec center. I'm grateful that the city put together that, that committee to look at it, look at the different possibilities. So, it's more than just recreation, there's other, there's other opportunities. The concern that I have is the cost, the short-term cost and the long-term cost. A recreation center that cost continues for as long as it's there, and that concerns me. Putting that burden on, on the voters, and I understand that it looks like a bond potentially could be brought forward, it's a lot of money, not only now, but for our future generations to pay for. So, that's a concern to me. I'm looking forward to seeing what that committee brings back, to look at what they have and the possibilities to fund it. As far as future, or something, kind of another statement piece to bring people in, I think our parks are amazing. I love Augur Falls, and it's rarely utilized. I think we have some great things currently in there, and the trail system that we're putting together has really grown. In the six and a half years that I've been here, I've seen the small chunks that the trail was made up of really expanded. And so, that's the area I think that we should continue to look at and grow.
The rec center is a step in the right direction. We live in a day and age where most people spend most of their time playing with these. Getting out of the house, getting out of the chair, going anywhere, doing anything is a challenge when they have this as a diversion that's easy and always on. The rec center is a small step in that direction. Absolutely, we need to investigate, we need to examine, we need to find out what options and opportunities are available. But I also think that we have made drastic success in capitalizing on what we have available to us. We've talked about the parks and all of the trailheads and all of those things that have been grown on, and those are our biggest successes. Everybody takes advantage of the trails that run along the canyon. All of that development brings in tourism, brings in corporate entities, it brings everybody to the playing field. That is a successful diversion to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I support the rec center. As a commissioner, we actually looked at the land, we discussed it, Terry Kramer and George Arias himself, that there's land west of the County West, the old hospital, and it's a gravel pit, so to speak, and we thought that would be a real great place to put it. And so, I totally support it, and I'm sure that land would be available. And then, you know, it would require a bond, and the people know what they want, you know, or what they can afford it. And so, when we put it before them, that would be the real decision. And I would hope that it would be very diverse for all people, you know? The elderly would be able to use it as, and with the youth, and the things that would go there. You know, the city's doing really well with our parks and rec system. I think, I think we would just need to just, like we said, just keep it current, keep it improved, and use as we have it for the health and for the families to get out and enjoy our, our great community. Now, I've been involved in the bike park, I've been involved in the skate park, and this is 30 years of, of community involvement. I've been involved in the dog park, and I was one of the original people with the Seestroms when they came here in developing Rock Creek Walkway. And so, you know, that, my heart is in that. I'm all for that. I love to bike, I love to just get out and recreate. And so, I think that that shows that my past involvement will also be my current and future involvement. And so, I appreciate what the city is doing for our community and helping them, we just keep that healthy.
Ms. Hawkins?
A rec center means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So, when you start talking about a rec center, first of all, you have to define what that is. And while we're defining that, we need to remember that the College of Southern Idaho has a very well-run fitness program. The YMCA has one. We also want to be careful that we're not competing with private industries such as Gold's Gym. So, we have different facilities in place that we need to make sure we're doing no harm to as we move forward with this. As Chris Reed said, there's also the cost and the continual cost on a rec center. So, as we're looking at these issues, we need to make sure that we can really fund this to what it needs to be. As someone who's participated in many, many rec games, my husband and I played city league volleyball for many, many years, and I know that there's no facility for us to play left in Twin Falls. The gyms are all full during the winter time for the children's basketball. There's not enough gyms for the kids to practice basketball in this city. They have to work on top of each other and practice with half gyms and whatever they can get. So, we know that there's a need. The important part now is we're doing that study. What is the need? What is the cost? And does it all weigh out? If it is plausible to make it all happen, I am 100% in support of it. But I think before anyone says, "Yes, we need a rec center," we need to do our homework first and make sure that a rec center is what you think a rec center is, and that we can financially afford the maintenance on a rec center. I think anyone who knows me, as long as I've been in city council, I have always had one wish and one dream that I hope to fulfill for the city before I leave public office, and that is to bring minor league baseball back to Twin Falls. We have some great property, it's doable, the leagues are expanding, and if we build the facility right during the offseason, it can be used for concerts and other events, and it would be a great asset to our community.
So, it's 10 to 7, and I think we just finished our second question. And in order to try to get as many questions asked as possible, I'm going to try to combine about six cards that I've got in my hand into a question that centers around, really, at the core of it is how people move through this city. Do you think that the council meets our play in our active role in being accommodating to walkers and cyclists? And then, I'll throw this into, just because it's been in the news a little bit lately, but part of that has to do with the walking path on Canyon Springs Road, should there be one there? And I know the committee has just kind of, has gone through that. So, Mr. Reed, I'll start with you. If you could talk a little bit about what the city should be doing to improve traffic patterns and then give us some... to improve traffic patterns and give us Canyon Springs Road, please.
I definitely think that the city does play a role in that. And as Vice Mayor Hawkins pointed out, we have people in place in our planning and zoning department that work on that. That is something that we've discussed. We want to make sure that this is a community where, if you drive, it's a great place to be, if you ride a bike, it's a great place to be, and if you walk, it's a great place to be. So we're in the process of doing that. I know there are some roads, some ways of getting around town that aren't the nicest, but that takes time. That's something that we've heard, we've heard from the community that that's something that they really want, and we're working on it. As far as Canyon Springs Road, it has not been brought to me. If there's a need for it, I think we should do that. As far as a trail, walking trail, again, it goes back to, if there's a need for it, that's something that we look at. If it's just a few people saying, hey, we would like this, well then we have to look at it because there is a cost associated with it. And we want to make sure that we're not putting money at something that no one's gonna be using.
Mr. Bell.
Living west of the Rockies, we forget just how reliant we are on the automobile and that there are other modes of transportation that are enjoyable. They're available, they're free, and we can't take advantage of them with the dominance of the automobile as it currently sits. Investment in those opportunities is part of growth. It's how we're going to attract more people, it's how we're going to attract the right kind of people. But it does need to be done in a financially irresponsible manner. We can't tax the public, we can't tax for something that's only going to benefit eight human individuals.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I think walkers and cyclists certainly have a place in our community, you know. So we need to really look at it and make sure that it's proper, you know, the right way. Because you want them to be safe. Right now, with all the people who text on their phones and red lights, I don't know, we really need to kind of look at that in our traffic systems, you know. And of course, as Auger Falls, you know, and Centennial Park, people love it to death. I mean, it is like, it's well-used, and that's a great thing. But as walkers go down there, it's also, could be very dangerous, you know. And so that's something, and it would be $4 million, I think was the smallest estimate I saw, to build a path for maybe a few hundred people. And we have all the other trails, so I'm not sure if that's money well-spent. I mean, if you look at a committee, go through that, and maybe there's a way to maybe develop like a stair system to get them down there. I mean, I know they want that to feel the burn, but as the future goes forward, it's getting more and more dangerous to people. I mean, we have rock slides, you know, and it blocks people down there. And I think it was an RV or somebody got down there, couldn't get turned around, you know, and it took hours. And so, I think those are things that we really need to look for, you know. And basically, just look at the cost and the amount of people are gonna use it to see if it's really beneficial, you know, and if that's what the citizens want. I'm a person that likes to listen, you know. I'm not here to just make all the decisions on my own. I like to get counsel from people and then make those decisions as we move forward.
Your thoughts, Suzanne.
Thank you. So we have been working on a master transportation plan for the city of Twin Falls. In fact, we just wrapped up that committee, and they have been looking at all the issues and the costs that come with those. So we have a list of priorities that we are approaching from the city, but we have to make sure that we are using the taxpayers' money wisely. As city council, our number one job is to oversee the budget of the city. It's our job to make sure you have clean water and the sewer system and roads to drive on, and then you get into a list of wants. And we cannot fund everybody's wants within a community, so we have to work through the highest priorities and wait for feedback from the community on what they're asking for. I think you've noticed that we have started printing shareos on roads that are safe for cars and bicyclists to share as a way to show that we're trying to find some savings to get bicyclists where they want to be without risking their health and safety. We put a lot of energy into what are good trails, how to get from point A to point B. But the other thing you have to remember in the city of Twin Falls is we are responsible for certain roads, but there's also the Highway District and the State of Idaho that owns a number of the roads through our community. We cannot put bike trails on state roads without going through a process with ITD. So there's a lot of intergovernmental working that has to work together in order to get some of these goals accomplished. And I think right now the city of Twin Falls is poised well, working with our partners throughout the community to make sure that we're addressing sidewalks, bicycle routes, car transportation, and where the city's going in the future. Just in case you don't know, we just recently implemented a grant program for people wanting to work on sidewalks in front of their homes, where we can help fund some of that now so we can start addressing some of those walking areas as well.
Mr. Smaller, please.
As far as the Canyon Springs Road Trail, you know, I was here for the meeting where the Citizens Committee presented their findings to the city council, and it was voted on, it was passed, and then all of a sudden, our roads are in terrible shape and now there's no money for it. I was of the, I remember Greg, you opposed that, and I kind of agreed with Greg on that. I thought we should go for the mitigation of the rockfall and then just keep the people on the road. I think that the fact that pedestrians are present on the road slows traffic down and makes it a safer road for everybody. I don't think, I think that the traffic volume is small enough or low enough that cars and pedestrians and bikes can coexist on that road. I think we need to get the semis off of Blue Lakes and Sho Shone, and I think to propose doing that, you need to, we're gonna have to look at making Pole Line and then Eastland more of a truck route, and then you're gonna have to redevelop the South Blue Lakes Five Points intersection. I'd also like to see us take control of the second avenues back from the Idaho Transportation Department and try to look at rerouting Highway 30 perhaps down to the Washington-Sixth-Minidoka Corridor. I think having two three-lane freeways bisecting the middle of our downtown is really hurting us. And the traffic volumes for sure don't justify three lanes one-way, three-lane one-ways. And then I think also on our redevelopment and all future roads being built in this community, we should look at 10-foot wide driving lanes versus 12-foot wide driving lanes. 12-foot lanes is something that's come about only in America in the last, since World War II, and it's not made our roads safer, it's made our roads more dangerous. And it would be a tremendous cost-saving and allow more room for bike lanes if we would go to that. Thank you.
Mr. Byatt.
Thank you. So in regards to, I think, any road decision or trail decision, I think, again, it needs to come from the people first. Serving on park and rec and being on various strategic plan committees for the city and working with committees on different tasks and projects throughout the last seven years, I noticed that there's the same people on the same committees. And it's really important that we have, one, committees that are conflict-free, you know, the people that are either going to be contracted to work or have a stake in the industry, that they're not on those committees, that the people, that you guys are on those committees just like that they're designed to be. That the information is provided and that the people first are represented, and they bring that decision then to the council. So the decisions, yes, they get implemented, the strategic plan gets built, there's projects, but again, a lot of the population is not included in this conversation, especially the disenfranchised part of the population, which is a large portion of Twin Falls. They're not included in these conversations. I think it's important to have somebody there to represent how this affects their neighborhoods, their property tax, their way of life, and if they want these projects and these type of decisions made. So that's important. In regards to the walking and biking, so, these are not just hobbies. These are some people's, the only way of transportation for them. I know as a refugee that for the biggest part of our integration, before we did afford a car, driving a car was not an option. Biking was the only way we could get to work. And so for a lot of people, biking and walking, that is their only way to get to their employment. And so safe roads are a priority, and making sure we're building that around all the people that are affected by it is important. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, Todd, where there's been enough people?
I told you this came up with six cars, I don't know what the question is. Can you talk a little bit about what the city's vision should be for getting people from point A to point B in the future, especially when it comes to walking and biking? And then I had one particular question about a walking, whether there should be a walking path down Canyon Springs Road.
Well, I'll start on the second part first because Eric stole my answer because he let him know that I bought. I am the only one on council that voted against it. We were gonna spend approximately $4 million, like Leon said, on the trail. I couldn't get my head around that. I would like to see a trail going down because I know about 100 people a day or more, on the average, throughout the year, use that trail, but I couldn't get to $4 million. And maybe I'm just too frugal, and I know the council as a whole is a little frugal. And then the winter of 2017 happened, and that money just went away. It went right back into our roads because we were in a situation where we didn't have a choice. We had to put that money into the roads to bring them back to some semblance. I know locusts died, I live on Elm Street, the last 150 feet of Elm Street just went away with the winter. And so, that's where that trail money went. Again, I think we're, I still can't get there quite on the money that it's gonna cost to do it. If we can find a way to make that trail come from a different area and we can build it cheaper, I'm all for it. I realize the burden people want, but I still have concerns with that much money for that type of thing. As far as our other trails and things, we've had a lot of help from MATEC to, which is Magic Valley Trail Enhancement Committee or Commission, and they've done a good job of helping us to expand some of the trails and that we hopefully will continue to do so. As far as the master plan, of course we can do better first on our streets as far as for bikes and walking. I've been doing a lot of walking on this campaign and I can see some of our issues, but again, it comes back to, what do we spend the money on? Because there are always more, far more wants than we have money. It happens every year, but thank you.
Mr. Allen.
I'll start with the walking and cyclists. We have a huge, and it's still growing, the cycling community. And it's not just in Twin Falls, it's the surrounding areas, it's Kimberly, it's Filer. We have a lot of people that want to ride their bikes into Twin, they can come to work that way. So I think if it's an opportunity to possibly work with the county, can we work with other cities to create, you know, safer trails or paths to get to Twin Falls? That's definitely an option I think we could look at. But once again, it becomes down to price, which we've all been kind of hearing about so far. You know, what's the cost? Do the people want it? Do the people, you know, we need to bring that before everybody else. And so that's really what all these things come down to, is, these trails, yeah, we have to upkeep them, but like a rec center, a rec center will bring in money. People around town could pay to go to the rec center. That way we can recoup some costs. But these trails and things, you know, there's, it's, once we put it in, it's there, we gotta maintain it, and there's no real way to make money off of it. So, the $4 million as well for the Canyon Springs Road, I mean, that's a lot of money. And we're limited by space, there's, you know, what else could we do down there to make it, you know, traffic already goes as slow as it can down a really steep hill? So if there's ways to make it safer, we should do it. The rockfall issues definitely could be looked at. Maybe more pedestrian signs, you know, if anything to just increase safety and awareness. Until we have the funds to pursue that kind of project, you know, I'm not sure we could do it yet. So, thank you.
Mr. Hauser.
Well, of course, everybody's already answered the question. So I mean, it's kind of up to the people and if we have the resources to do it. But we do need to maintain safer routes for people who walk and ride their bikes. My sister walks to work sometimes. And I've rode my bike all over town, and I usually would ride on sidewalks or at least in places where I knew I wouldn't have to worry about getting hit by cars or like people talking on their cellphones, like Leon mentioned. When we brought, before the City of the Helmet Law thing, my main concern was are we enforcing people talking on their cellphones? You know, when it comes to the safety of people walking and riding their bikes. And also, we need to also look forward to the future of having busing routes. So, again, is it cost-effective and can we do it? And are the people gonna use it?
Great, thank you. So let's turn our attention to taxes on the city budget. Just to give you a heads up, we are gonna cut you down to a minute and a half so we can try to get a few more questions in here. So, we have a question from somebody in the audience around forgone balances. And so that we're all on the same page. Each year, the city is allowed to take a maximum 3% increase on their budget. And in a year that they don't take 3%, for example, a 2% increase, the state allows you to go back and take that 1% at a later time. That's considered a forgone balance. And so the question is, do you support the city exercising their right to take a forgone balance? So that's kind of a yes or no. And then the follow-up to that is, is as you've looked at the city budget, what area do you think the city ought to be focusing more attention on? Or is there an area that they should be more fiscally responsible on within the budget? And Ms. Hawkins, we'll start with you.
So the forgone balance has been an issue going on in the Boise Legislature for the legislature for the last couple of years as well. Twin Falls is one of the cities with the highest amount of their forgone balance throughout the state of Idaho. And so, some of the state leaders think that maybe we should not have that any longer so that we can't raise taxes all at one time. But by having a forgone balance formula in the state, it allows us to be more frugal as we're setting our budgets. Twin Falls is one of the only cities in the state that even discusses not taking 3%. Other cities do it as a random practice, and it's never thought of as an option to not do it. So it's kind of a bonus to help us be better managers of your money, knowing that that money's there if we come into a situation like we did with the arsenic a few years ago or different things, that that money is available, but it's something that should only be touched in the case of an emergency. This year, the council discussed the forgone balance in detail, and it was a split decision to not take the forgone balance, which I believe my voice was the lead in that cause. We have so many projects going on in the city right now that we don't have the manpower to take on another project. So why take money that isn't going to be used for a good purpose? We really need to know what it's gonna go for and how it's gonna be spent. With our city budget, we do budget eight months out of the 12 months of a year. We're very conscientious and spend a lot of time looking at every fact and figure in there.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I understand forgone, you know, you get a 3%, which is good. And if you didn't have forgone, people would just take 3% all the time. So that's the way it works. But I don't believe in having a forgone balance because all of a sudden, you, my taxes are 3%, and I set my budget for that, and then all of a sudden, the city says, well, I'm gonna take 5% this year. And so then my taxes will raise that amount. And I'm not so sure that everybody has that in their budgets, and so it's really not fair to them, you know. So I think if we're just frugal with the budget and we only need 2%, take it. And so we lose the one. I don't think we should put it into a savings account to tax the people in the future if something doesn't. Because then it gives them a 5 or 6% opportunity to tax us in one year. So, you know, with a $64 million budget, I think the city does well and they plan well. And I think if we're good stewards with the money that we have and direct it to the right things, then I think that as the city moves forward, we can finance the things that we need with that 3% or whatever we need to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I don't know anybody who likes getting a surprise paid cut, which is what the forgone taxes really is. We can hold on to that percentage point for taxation at a later point, but for the voting public, that is a surprise tax bill that they may or may not have the capacity for. If we don't use it, don't tax it and leave it at that.
Well, the state allows us to do this right now. And so it allows us as a city to look at the current budget and the current needs that we have, but also, if there is an emergency, to go back and take some of those funds. And so I am in favor. And so I am in favor. The state allows us to do it. I'm in favor of it. But the reason that I said no this last year ultimately was because it wasn't for a specific need. We hadn't beforehand, as the city council said, the foregone balance will go towards this. We discuss roads, but not specific projects. And if we're going to do that and put that burden on the taxpayers, we need specific projects. If we were to use this, to go back to your question, it would be for specific infrastructure needs. As Greg pointed out, his, his road is still under repair. We have an infrastructure issue. And, and we still don't know as far as roads are concerned, how bad it really is. We have water issues, water lines that need to be replaced. Those are the types of issues that the foregone balance should go for. Not for a rec center, not for salaries, anything like that, but specifically infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I agree with Leon, good stewardship of the money that we do get. Are we investing in things that will bring the city money so that the projects that we do invest in kind of pay for themselves and bring profit back to the city? Again, we have bigger issues like our infrastructure. We need better watershed to take care of the snow and the rain, which we're inevitably going to get more of like we had last winter. So get out there and get the roads fixed and make sure that they stay fixed. When we look at the budget, make sure that we are investing in things. Like when we worked on downtown, I've had a lot of people come up and say, why is it taking so long? And where'd the money go, you know? So those are issues we need to look at and better stewards of the funds that we do have. And I'm a taxpayer and I'd hate to get hit with a sudden increase in taxes. But if it's for a good cause, then I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I, I agree with, and I'll echo Chris Reed. You know, the, it's, the money needs to go someplace. We need to see, you know, we need specific projects. Where is this money going? I, I think a lot can be said about, but, or financial accountability, you know, with the city managers, with the council itself. You know, where is this money going? Make them accountable. What are these projects, you know, that the money's going to so that people can see that change? We talked a lot about the roads and, you know, if, we did, we do have bad winters. And so we got to prepare for these things. You know, nobody can predict when a water line breaks. Nobody can see these things coming. So, you know, we always got to be prepared. And, and just being good stewards, I know that word's been thrown around, you know, being honest to the people with the budgets, you know, what it does. And it's also, the budget's a, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a document, if you want to call it that. It's, it's always changing. You know, we have to, we can't predict like said, some things that happen. So we have to be prepared for those things that do.
Mr. Biden.
Sure. The foregone is one of those issues that, you know, if we talked about it this year, I think ultimately we all decided that, no, we're, we just aren't, we're going to take it this particular year. We did take them once while I was on council and we, we used it to set up our zone maintenance system in the city. Whereas we go into an area and we try to do the road, if we're going to do things to roads, we do it in that area. And at the same time, we do water, we do sewer so we don't have to come back two years later and tear up the road that we just built. Things like that. So we, we have used it in the past. Since I've been on here 12 years, we've been frugal punch. We've only taken the 3% less than half the time, maybe less than a fourth of the time. And we certainly never took any of it during the 3% during the recession. We, we held them in 1%. We tightened our belts, we cut out training, we reduced employees. We did what we could to make sure we didn't have to take any of that 3%. But it is a rainy day fund, it's just a slow rainy day fund. In other words, you can't just say, well, we're going to take it. You've got a plan for it. And we, we, we spent eight months on the budget, way longer than it feels like we should need. But when we get done, we're pretty sure, oh, every dollar is being spent. We know where it's at. And our city employees have done a really good job. If they don't use the money, a lot of government entities, if they don't use it, they lose it. And so they tend to spend it. We, we work in a culture where they say, hey, if I don't need it, I'll have a chance to get it back next year. And they work on that, that attitude. So that's the way we've operated.
Thank you, Mr. Biden.
Thank you.
I need 30 seconds to.
I don't, I don't think, I lived in several different governments, both on the other side of the world during the Soviet Union and then here. Government will never ever say that, you know, we've had enough, we've had enough money, let's stop taxing. So I think that it's important for us as a community to be very cautious on even the most gradual increase to our utilities, on even the most gradual increase to our taxes. Because at the end of the day, we do live in a community that has increasing poverty. And sadly, those individuals are not represented when these decisions are made. They are the families that are probably renting. And so when there is an increase of any kind to a tax, even if it's a gentle increase, then the landlords do pass it down to the people renting. On top of that, we have a housing crisis in Twin Falls, which makes it very difficult to even find rental units. So in regards to the foregone balance, I, I think that, again, it comes down to spending in a, in a very responsible way and, and also looking at our budget and making sure that we're investing in those programs that are bringing back the most good. I think the second part of your question, if I, if I heard it right, was in regards to what in the budget would, would I support? I'd like to see us support programs that help clean up our community. We have a meth and a pill epidemic that, the opiate epidemic that's destroying the, the household. And I think that that would be important to start funding and looking at.
Mr. Smollett.
Thank you.
You know, in, in times of prosperity which we're experiencing in Twin Falls, I, I would have, I would have probably been in favor of taking the foregone balance or at least in maybe 1 or 2% of that and applying it into a roads budget. I think John Caden, our Public Works Director, does a great job. I think Travis Rothweiler, our city manager, does a great job of overseeing John. I think he's, he's shown a track record of spending money wisely on his projects. We've got 246 lane miles of roads in this city. That's roughly 15.6 million square feet. We took, our roads took a beating last winter. And I think as soon as we start seeing some moisture falling and snow here and we get a freeze thaw cycle going with moisture here, then they say we could have another bad winter. Our, you're going to find our roads are, are going to be even more decimated than they were last year. So I, I think, one, given the climate of our legislature, probably looking towards perhaps, you know, the climate's there, I think to where they, they might take away the ability for us to use the foregone balance. I, I could see that out of our legislature. So I think we should have taken it and used it while we, one, our economy's healthy and two, while we still have the ability to do it and put it towards our roads. You know, roads are a function of mainly oil prices. Oil's at 51 bucks a barrel right now. It's going to go back up, I promise you. So road, road repairs are just going to get a lot more expensive in the future. Thank you.
Okay, lightning round, we're going down to one minute now. Mr. Ling, I'm going to start with you. We're kind of saying on economic, the city economics issue here. One of the biggest chunks of the city budget goes to employees themselves, training them, paying them the benefits. And, and one area that the, the city's really struggled with, it's not a new problem, but it's kind of a lot worse recently, is in its police and fire forces. Because agencies, particularly in the Treasure Valley, are able to pay a little bit more. So some of our best providers are being lured away. The city discussed increasing pay for those, those employees this year. But what's the solution ultimately to that problem?
Well, what's the solution ultimately? I, I think we've stemmed the tide considerably. We did a.
And lightning round, you got one minute.
We, we stemmed the tide this last year. We did a mid-year adjustment for both our police and our fire. They got a raise last year, they got a raise this year. And we have stemmed the tide going because it's, it's really frustrating to spend thousands and thousands of dollars training an officer and they can't even be in a car by themselves for a full year. And then you spend all that money training them and here comes a Brady and then says, oh, we're going to pay you $15,000. And if you're young and your family is important because you want to be able to provide the things for your family that you, they, you feel they deserve, you're going to go. Okay? And so we've stemmed the tide with that, but we also, holy crap. And I think also, I think we have to continue to create an atmosphere. Some of the times we talk about a sense of place, we have to want people to want to live in Twin Falls. And I think that will help stem that tide losing employees.
Just beat the buzzer. Mr. Allen.
Yeah, the, I'm a strong supporter of police and fire forces. You know, the pay, which is good, the pay's been going up. So like we were saying, we've, we've kind of taken hold of that. And that, and that goes for any business, any, you know, government. When you train an employee, you spend a lot of money getting that person ready, you know, whatever job it is. And then they decide to move. So what are the options? What can we do better? You know, pay go up, but also what are the benefits that we offering? You know, I don't know all the benefit packages for the city and the fire, you know? But that's always something to look at. Is there something else we can offer for them to keep them here? And then benefits of the community, you know, having, you know, the things that we've talked about up here. What, why do they want to stay here? And as I said earlier, way at the beginning, you know, the people here, we have a great community and they're going to stay here because of the people and, you know, the way we treat each other. This is a great place to live. So if we can keep them here, they'll stay here. And, you know, we just got to find different ways to do this.
Mr. Hauser.
I think that we need to look at our laws and make sure that our laws are protecting and serving the public. So we're not wasting resources, blocking people up and taking police time and public defenders' times. And, and so that we're really well thought out laws and paying them the wages that they deserve for putting their lives in danger. And that way we got better laws, sensible laws. And then we've got them trained and they'll want to stay.
Mr. Reed.
I think we need to look at it as a whole, their compensation and not just salaries, but the work environment, the benefit packages that they receive, everything as a whole to ensure that people want to stay here. Most people here that are working understand that there's a lot that goes into it. The community, making sure that it's a livable, affordable community for them. So that as another community comes in and tries to pull some of our people away, they look at it, is their family happy? Are their children happy? Are they safe? Do they want to stay here? So those are the types of things that we need to make sure that we're looking at. While compensation is, as far as salary is very important, we do need to look at what our neighboring communities are paying these individuals. Yes, we did do a bump in police and fire, but we also need to make sure that our engineers are planning and zoning all these other areas. We're compensating them fairly so that we don't see a dip in these other areas.
Mr. Bell.
Money's the easy part. It's easy to add a tick to a bottom line and say, yes, we offer a competitive salary. The hard part is keeping them. They're not going to stick around unless there's a community they feel a part of. And that is something that is extraordinarily difficult to provide any employee. But we have to find a way.
Ms. Bayon.
Okay, the, the second part of the question was, there was.
How do you solve the whole problem?
Oh, easy. Oh, yeah, one minute?
Yeah, our, our bigger cities are scooping up our best policemen and firefighters because they can afford to pay more. The city took steps this year to increase the salaries. But ultimately, what's the long-term fix for maintaining a top-notch?
Sure, so, so I couldn't even begin answering that question without acknowledging that, almost, I believe, I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think almost about 10% of our law enforcement here in Twin Falls is from former refugees that have come here through the CSI program. And I want to acknowledge that because that shows that the, the labor and the talent doesn't just go to the factories, that it affects the rest of our community. And I'm very proud of that. How do we get people to get into these jobs, right? That was the, the, the main chunk of the question. I think we need to start young. Being on the school board, I, I've worked and, and heard about these dual credit situations where young people early on can become interested in careers. And so let's maybe work on partnerships within the community and expand on ability for them to start training early on for police and fire department. And also to not just look at the compensation, but just look at making sure that, that younger generation's being attracted into those jobs.
Thank you, Eric.
So I think that the city's corrective actions that were taken earlier in the year are effective. If you listen to Chief Kingsbury, he'll tell you he thinks they're effective. Because we no longer have a fire chief anymore. But we just approved the, the, the city council just approved the, the labor contract with the fire department. It seems like they're happy. So I think we've probably done a, you know, the major thing, it's money, of course. So we raised their pay. I think that we continue to give them a, a welcoming community that shows we support them. If you come into the council meetings, which I come to most, you'll see whenever there's a presentation, you know, the, for the police department, you get 30 officers in here. Whenever there's a presentation for the fire department, you get 30 fire, firemen and women in here. And so I, I really think that, I think we just keep listening to our, to our chief of police and, and taking. Stop.
So I think the answer is that the city of Twin Falls needs to become the employer of choice for the Magic Valley. We've worked very hard on our new One City initiative where everybody in the city of Twin Falls is an equal team member, that everybody has a voice that can be heard, everybody has a voice where they can participate in decisions being made. We did have to concentrate heavily this year on wages for police and fire because we were so far below the market for the rest of the state of Idaho. The rest of our team members understood that and then willing to take a step back and say, you can catch up with us next year. Let's take care of this problem we have in the city. And I think that shows the atmosphere that our city manager and our teams have created for people to want to work for the city. Other things we've implemented were season passes to Shishang Falls for city employees. Benefits that we can offer that don't cost the taxpayers money, but they're valued by our employees. And it shows that we're all here working together to provide the services that our citizens need.
Finally, Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I, I believe that we need to keep up with the scale of pay, you know? We need to be competitive, we need to do wage surveys and make sure that, you know, the cost of living is there because this is a great community to live in. And there's people that are going to move away anyway, just for the excitement of living in bigger cities. But I think that the, the police and the fire department, they deserve the best pay we can give them because they lay their lives down every day for us and our safety. I really appreciate that.
Great, thank you very much. Well, we've come now to the time for closing comments. So we're going to give you one minute to just share some final thoughts and, and let voters know why they should elect you to the city council. Again, one minute and Mr. Bell will start with you.
Thank you all for the opportunity that has been provided to me to run for this office. I very much have been enjoying the experience and I enjoy being out here with all of these candidates and experiencing their comments on these questions. Thank you very much.
I also would like to thank everybody for being here. I have truly enjoyed living in Twin Falls and plan on continuing to live here. I love the city. I have enjoyed meeting many of you in my associations. I feel that my experience and the committees that I've been on, the, on planning and zoning and also 10 months on city council, helps me and, and would provide a lot of benefit to the city of Twin Falls and, and those residents if you would vote for me. So thank you.
Mr. Hauser.
Well, I'm fourth generation Idaho and I have about eight generations on both sides of the family tree. Idaho is my home. I've lived on the Oregon coast and I've lived in the Seattle area. And I just look forward to the opportunity of serving this community and possibly changing some of our policies. Like we're talking about the, the legal system and the laws. Marijuana, medical marijuana is the second largest growing business in America. And I think that we could save on our resources that are wasted on our police officers and legal system prosecuting people for using that as a non-term of medicine. And I think that that would bring a tax revenue that would help this city repair its infrastructure, put it towards the rec center and other projects. So I'd appreciate your vote and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I'd say thank you as well for everyone to take the time to come here. This has also been a really good experience for me, getting out and trying to get more involved. And I think if anything out of this election, you know, that's what I want to, hopefully. And I think if anything out of this election, you know, that's what I want to hopefully portray to everyone is, you know, this is new to me. So if we can get more people involved, I think it's going to help our community grow and get better and make it a really great place to live and continue to be a great place to live. You know, I'd like, just echo everyone, I love Twin Falls. I was born here, I hope to retire here. So you want to make it a great place? Thank you.
Mr. Langton?
Again, I'd like to thank you for coming. I think I've been involved in, I'd like to thank you for coming. I've been involved in four of these now and I think this is the largest crowd we've had. And since we're streaming it, I'm sure we got a lot of people that want to see this. First, I want you to vote for me over the, I think, experience. I think of the things I've learned over the last 12 years position me to help the city I love to move forward and move into the future. And that's what I plan to do. And to be honest with you, I'd like to win the last, what I assume will probably be my last term. I think after I've been around this long, probably time for me to move forward. But I'm ready and willing and still very active and still willing to go out to the community and find out what their needs are, their thoughts, and vote accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Babiyan.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank everyone also for being here. This is one of the most probably diverse crowds that at least I've seen whenever any time I've been in a city council event. And I don't know if the broadcast can show the crowd or not, but it's wonderful to see the age dynamic and the diversity represented here. And that's exactly what I want to do. We've had a stagnation in representation in Idaho since probably the beginning of time. And the narrative and the heritage of Twin Falls includes all the diversity that this community in this area has been built on, including the economy and the growth of the city. And that diversity, that growing diversity is valuable and it needs to be represented in government. And I'm here to represent all the people, but I do want to represent the larger population of the voices that have traditionally have been left out, including Latinos and refugees and immigrants and non-traditional Americans. So thank you very much. Vote starting Monday and Leah Babiyan, you can learn more about my platform. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
I'll echo everybody else and thank all of you for coming out and spending your time tonight to hear what we have to say. I think many people run for city council and they do it to be reactive instead of proactive. It's kind of like, you know, they get up here just to sit and have the world brought to them and they'll decide. Well, I'm not running for that reason. I'm running to be proactive. I've got a bunch of ideas on how to make this a more pedestrian, bike-friendly town and how to improve our transportation coordinators to allow us to be able to do that. And so if you'll elect me, that's what I'm going to focus on and I would appreciate your vote and confidence in that. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins? First of all, thank you to the Times News for putting this event together for us. Without your hard work, none of us would be here tonight. And thank you to everyone in the audience who took time to come out and learn more about issues facing the city and different ideas for how to tackle some of the issues that we will be dealing with in the next four years. During my term on council, I've had the opportunity to represent many areas in this community. I'm involved with Kiwanis, the youth, my church, Salvation Army, Paint Magic, South Central Community Action Partnership. I've tried to make myself available for ribbon cuttings and events that the chamber brings together. And I've done it because I wanted to learn more about all the different groups in our community. And I feel like I've been a good representative and that I've listened to concerns. I have people who stop in my business on Blue Lakes just to run something by me that they'd like me to bring to the council. And that is something I'd like to continue doing. I would like to continue with our youth council and make sure that our children are taught to have their voices heard as well. Thank you very much and I would appreciate your votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I stay up on the current needs, you know, being born here and I love this community and that's why I didn't move away, you know? And also look at future needs. That's something I think about quite a bit, you know? What could better our community? So those are the way I think. I'm a futuristic thinker, you know? At my county experience, I bring, I understand the government, I understand a lot of laws, I understand budgets, development, planning and zoning. So I wouldn't even need to come up this speed. I understand a lot of things because that's what I did in the past. And as a futuristic thinker, you know, I want to say I'm a common sense person also. So I offer my experience and I'm saying that my thoughts are a way to protect the future and I thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, well, we'd like to remind everybody that on Sunday, October 29th, we'll have a voter's guide published in the Times News. If you haven't submitted your answers to the questions, please get those in. And they'll also republish on Wednesday, November 1st, in The Messenger. So thank you all for coming and be sure to get out and vote.